Senator Rispisho, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I've asked the clerk to prepare a spreadsheet indicating some additional bills, a resolution and an appointment for consideration to be placed in the second reading file. As we all know, there's some bills that are currently in the second reading file that are going to either remain in the second reading file for various reasons. And so, having said that, I moved that now with saying the House rules, we revert back to motions for purposes of entertaining a motion. And I've prepared this in a spreadsheet and all the items that I'll be moving copies have been made. And our colleagues have been aware by way of this correspondence.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
So I'm, thank you, thank you colleagues. I moved then to place Bill 221-33, introduced by Senator Frank Uggan. It's an act to amend certain sections of the code relative to business privilege tax on primary contractors and subcontractors. I move this to be placed in the second reading file.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
On Bill 224-33, introduced by Senator Rodriguez, as amended by the author, an act to amend certain sections of the code relative to extending the business privilege tax exemptions for childcare facilities and group childcare homes so as to continue to promote early childhood learning and development opportunities for modern childcare facilities.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
And from Senator Spaldan, on Bill 370-33, an act to add new definitions to the Guam Secure and Fair Enforcement for Mortgage Licensing Act of 2010. I move this to be placed in the second reading file.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
And my bill, 384-33, an act to amend certain sections of the code to provide for preference for veterans and access to public housing units available for rent. I move this to be placed in the second reading file.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And on a bill, your bill that we just publicly heard yesterday, Bill 400-33, Speaker Wampad, as amended by the Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Micronations Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform in Capital District, an act to amend certain sections of the code relative to authorizing continuing appropriations to the Commission on Decarbonization for the purpose of conducting an extensive public education and information program for fiscal years 2015 and 2016.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
And on a resolution that's just recently been introduced by Senator Uggan, it's relative to expressing its enthusiastic support for the renomination of Honorable Francis Idinko Gadewood as Chief Judge of the District Court of Guam, and to further recognizing her distinguished career as a jurist in and for the territory of Guam and the United States of America.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
And a motion to place in legislative concurrence, and you were designated as the hearing officer by Senator Underwood, who deemed she had a potential conflict of interest. So, on a public hearing which you just recently conducted, I move to place in legislative concurrence, Mr. Ronald, Dr. Ron McNich to be a member, upper level managerial position in private business representative Guam, for the Guam Education Board.
No objections, so ordered.
And also at the request of sponsor Senator Uggan, on Bill 318, that's in the third reading file, I move that it be placed in the bottom of the second reading file for further legal counsel review and possible floor amendments.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
So Madam Speaker, again, I don't have any other motions. I move that we move to the legislative concurrence file.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so in legislative concurrence, I move to put in the voting file on the appointment of Dr. Ron McNich to the Guam Education Board.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Then move that we go to the second reading file.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. Okay, Bill 224, Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 224, as amended by the author, on third reading.
And are you going to speak on it?
Speak on it, yes ma'am.
So you may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 224 is relative to extending the business privilege tax exemptions for childcare facilities and group childcare homes so as to continue to promote early childhood learning and development opportunities for modern childcare facilities. What this does, Madam Speaker, is that back in the 31st Guam Legislature, the body had moved to modernize the rules and regulations governing the childcare facilities and group childcare homes. This wasn't prior to that, this hasn't been done for about 30, 35 years. It was only through an executive order that we were using some sort of regulations to oversee these types of facilities. And so, we did, we worked with stakeholders and moved to modernize the, these facilities. And from that, of course, it took a substantial amount of investment and resources for these facilities to come up to standard. And the initial discussion there was that to be able to help these facilities, be able to help families that send their kids to, hold the costs of tuition costs and childcare costs, it was to provide them a business privilege tax exemption. I believe this is one of the last exemptions that we were able to provide as a government at that time. And so, that five-year period has come. It's expired this month, November of this month. And so, the intent of this is really to just continue that exemption. In talking with the facilities, the stakeholders, we know that there's still a need to be able to help in controlling some of the costs. The regulations that we have established were staggered in, they had to be complied within a couple of years. And so, it wasn't a one-time shot that had to be done. And so, as we moved forward and took a look at some of the changes that needs to be done, clearly, it is important for us to be able to continue this support and be able to extend these exemptions for a longer period of time. Because the government has not been receiving this for the past five years, there's really no, you know, no impact to even the budget that we've recently passed for this fiscal year. And so, it's a matter of just extending it, ensuring that we provide a support to these facilities, but more importantly, provide a support to families who send their kids to these childcare facilities in terms of holding the line in childcare costs. So I'm asking my colleagues to please support this measure. I have a pack of petitions that were signed, that were delivered by the Guam Childcare and Development Association, and so we'll have this circulated and provided to the senators as well. So I'm asking for my colleagues' support on this measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator, those signatures, are you going to make that a part of your committee report as well?
If I may, I would like to move to make it a part of the journal. Thank you.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered. On the motion for Bill 224, Senator Snickel, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just wanted to officially register my gratitude to the sponsors of the legislation as well as those affected by the bill. They graciously allowed for the committee to withhold the moving of the committee report for this particular legislation because of some timing concerns, but I do rise in full support of the measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, is there anybody else who'd like to speak? There being none. On the motion then to send 224 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Spaldan, on Bill 370-33?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 370-33COR into the third reading file, and I'd like to briefly speak to it.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill was, is being introduced by myself on behalf of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. The Department of Revenue and Taxation drafted rules and regulations concerning the, excuse me, relative to the Secure and Fair Enforcement for Mortgage Licensing Act of 2010. They drafted the rules and regulations that initially included and proposed new definitions. These definitions and the accompanying rules and regulations were to be placed on the website for the Nationwide Mortgage Licensing System, otherwise known as the NMLS. The NMLS, the Nationwide Mortgaging Licensing System, is a system of record for non-depository financial services licensing or registration in participating state agencies, including the District of Columbia and the U.S. Territories of Puerto Rico, the U.S. Virgin Islands and Guam. In these jurisdictions, the NMLS is the official system for companies and individuals seeking to apply for, amend, renew, and surrender license authorities managed through NMLS by 61 state or territorial government agencies. The late Senator Ben Pangolin asked the Department of Revenue and Taxes to remove these definitions when they were being proposed in their rules, since they were not part of the SAFE Act of 2010 as enacted. The definitions were removed for the proposed rules and the regulations. However, and unfortunately, these definitions had also been added to the NMLS website but were not removed. As many as, as a consequence, as many as 27 licensed applicants relied upon the listed requirements on the NMLS website for their individual licenses. And so, in essence, they received licenses at the Department of Revenue and Tax. The Department of Revenue and Taxation's regulatory examiner at the time, who was assigned to the NMLS transactions, licensed 27 applicants in error. All of the licenses are in full compliance with the requirements for licensing and are conducting business on Guam. They have added to the ability of our local residents to be able to secure financing to buy homes. The Department of Revenue and Taxation is asking this body to consider adding these definitions contained in 370-33 to the SAFE Act of 2010, rather than to attempt to transition the 27 licensees to a license application to their role in the mortgage transaction. And this is being, again, requested through the Banking and Insurance Commissioner's Office at the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and I'm hoping that this body will concur. By the way, the reason why this is time-sensitive, Madam Speaker, is because these licenses really are being issued, should have been issued, starting November 1st, all the way to the end of the year, December 31st. And as of yet, those who have had licenses and are operating right now, or have been operating, have not been able to secure their license. And so, they're asking that we consider the passage of this legislation, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the motion? There being none. On the motion then to send 370-33 to the third reading without any objections, so ordered. Bill Number 384, Senator Rispisho, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 384 in the third reading file with some brief discussion.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. This bill would provide a preference for veterans and access to public housing units available for rent, particularly through the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority. A public hearing was conducted in this bill, on this bill, and we received favorable testimony from GOR officials as well as from veterans organizations. And adding, adding this category of homeless veteran into the other categories in terms of preferences that the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Development provides for all their applicants and how they're screened, would certainly go a long way to recognize the need of any government and any community to take care of our veterans. And this bill goes a long way to doing that. So I ask for consideration by our colleagues to, to make this in the selection process for the authority to provide preference for any veteran, and it lists a whole listings of things of the household of which the veteran is a member, the surviving household members of a deceased service member or veteran who died of service-connected causes, and then it has provided the death occurred during active duty service or within five years of discharge, and the death occurred no more than five years from the date of application for housing. So this was conducted by Senator Munia Barnes's housing committee, and like I said, there was a lot of favorable testimony for this bill.
On the motion? Does anyone like to speak on Bill 384? Okay, we're going to take a brief recess.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I request that this bill be set aside. There's a couple amendments we're working on such as defining, providing a definition for veteran, which is also contained in the code and it wouldn't hurt to put that here, and also to look at other sections of this bill so that we can, we can make it better. So I move that it be set aside until such time those amendments are ready.
Okay. On that motion, objections ordered. Senator, I mean, Mr. Vice Speaker?
Madam Speaker, you recognize on Bill 400-33.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to send Bill, to place Bill 400-33 in the third reading file, and this is as amended by the Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform and Capital District. And if I could just briefly discuss it.
Any objection? Hearing none.
Thank you again, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Senator Esposito, who is the co-chair, and Senator Tonyada and myself are members of the Commission on Decolonization. And one of the biggest concern with the Commission on Decolonization, who are tasked to conduct an extensive public education and information program, has always had the major stumbling block, and what that normally is, is the budget, you know, monies that are given to them. And I guess because of the time that they are not as active, because dates have not been set to, to, to jumpstart this awareness educational program, that the monies have just never really been there, and, and, or if they are, then they're not readily available or released. When the governor this year had decided to jumpstart this and basically set a date for this election year, this November election year, the biggest concern by the task force was being able to receive the monies, to be able to go out and start the campaign. So the governor brought some people in and wanted his people to work with him, and said that they would try to expedite it as much as possible. They even got one special person at the governor's office who would receive all the requests. The members themselves would have to go out and get three votations, and somehow it just, it languished. And then it ended up being expired, all of the requests were expired, and monies were not released. And so it became very frustrating, and here we were approaching the date as to when then this should happen, when it's going to take place. And so many other methods of really looking at seeing how then the monies could be released, should it be a grant, should it go under, very similar to what the government did with, with FESPA by having GBB handle the monies, you know, but none of those, of course, came to fruition. So what this bill, of course, will do, several things, is that, one, there are monies that were appropriated earlier, and I don't know how we missed it when we were doing the budget, because I know that we were able to, to break up the total amount equally by the three task forces, but we didn't do the continuing appropriation for, for the Commission on Decolonization. So the very first thing then here is that it says that the money shall be divided, of course, equally among the task force, so that language definitely is included. It's up to you, Mr. Speaker, to find out who you're going to fine, because after all, Christmas is coming up and they're going to need that fine.
It would have to be half the price that you pay for yesterday's.
And then, of course, the other is that it should be, that these funds shall be expended, of course, exclusively as advised by the task forces and approved by the vote of COD. And then the unexpendable balance of the funds appropriated shall not lapse and, you know, continue to be made available. What they would do is that they will then, in the discussion, in the public hearings, that they will publish this on their website within 30 days of such procurement and expenditures, and then submit it to copies, of course, to the governor and the legislature. So this is repeated as well for the continuing appropriation on Section 2 and also on Section 3 for the two different years, 15 and 16. So I ask my colleagues to please support this. They have been moving, they have been meeting, I know they've been having monthly meetings. People are just getting excited now and starting to talk about it, and there's even conversations that, you know, that they're even considering whether 2018 might be the date. So it's really important that this bill be passed to support the efforts of the Commission on Decolonization and the three different task forces. So I ask my colleagues for their support. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? On the main motion, 400-33, any other senator wish to speak on it? If not, any objection to 400 going down to the voting file?
No objection.
There being none.
Resolution.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
513, right? Is that the correct number?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much, colleagues for, and the majority leader for adding this to the agenda. This is Resolution Number 513-33 LS, and is sponsored by Yours Truly and also The Good Speaker and the Vice Speaker, and is relative to expressing its enthusiastic support for the renomination of the Honorable Frances Tadicul Gatewood as Chief Judge of the District Court of Guam, and further recognizing her distinguished career as a jurist in and for the territory of Guam and the United States of America. Madam Speaker, the chief judge positions are appointed every decade, and the initial appointment for Chief Judge Frances Tadicul Gatewood was back in 2006, so she's nearing the expiration of that initial appointment. So the incoming president would be charged with nominating, appointing, and selecting a chief judge to fill that position for the subsequent 10 years. So, Madam Speaker, this resolution is requesting the chief executive to endorse enthusiastically the renomination of Chief Judge Frances Tadicul Gatewood. I believe that we all know, not only her tremendous contribution in terms of being a jurist, or serving as a chief judge for the U.S. District Court of Guam, but also a lot of her civic and community activities really exemplifies the character that she has brought to the bench, and she continues to make Guam proud, at least from my perspective, in terms of her contribution as, serving in that particular capacity. So, Madam Speaker, I ask for your support, okay, the support of all of our other colleagues in regards to this particular resolution. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motions, Mr. Vice Speaker, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this resolution. I think it's unfortunate that we don't have a Article III judge, federal court judge on Guam, and that the reappointment has to be made every, every 10 years. I've known Judge Gatewood for well over 20 years, and maybe even 30, close to 30 years, when I went to the bench. And I was very proud to have been one of her, one person that nominated her to Governor Ada for the position of a trial court judge. I was so pleased with the way that she was handling her position there that when I was, moved up to the Supreme Court, and when I retired from the court, I was very happy to go speak to Governor Gutierrez about seeing to it that Frances replaced me on the Supreme Court bench. I was disappointed she left there, but I was very happy that she moved to the district court, because I was hoping it would be someone that we could have for nearly a lifetime by having a, someone who got more than just one 10-year term. And I'm hoping that though she and I may have disagreed on how she handled a couple of things, she was always very fair, and she was very thorough in her work, and I, I think she is a, a, a really good person to, to maintain this position, and I'm hoping that this resolution will be looked at very closely by the incoming administration. There needs to be some judicial continuity, and I believe Judge Gatewood is the person to do that. So I'm, I'm hoping my colleagues will unanimously approve this resolution. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion? There being none, so the motion then to send Resolution 513, third reading, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Ogun, on Bill 221-33.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of Bill Number 221-33 COR, substituted by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development, into the third reading file, please, Madam Speaker.
You may, yes, it is, and you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, colleagues, also for adding this to the agenda. Madam Speaker, what we have here is a proposal that, the process was initiated by our prior speaker of the Guam Legislature, Speaker Pangalina. Back in the 30th Guam Legislature, he had identified that, in fact, the military buildup is going to bring in not only construction work or services that is going to be directly related to the buildup itself, but there are going to be primary contractors that would be given contracts that may not necessarily have business licenses in Guam. So at that time, he tried to, he worked very judiciously on crafting legislation that would ensure that these primary contractors, as well as some of the other contractors associated with any military buildup projects, that they pay their taxes through the GRT process. And, Madam Speaker, that is alluded to in the legislative findings and intent through Public Law 30-230, that was the initial legislation that The Good Speaker had sponsored and had gotten through back in 2010. What we have here now, Madam Speaker, is Bill Number 221, which is relative to the business privilege tax on the definitions of primary contractors and subcontractors. And if we look at the proposal, if I can just direct all of our colleagues, Madam Speaker, to really the second paragraph in the legislative findings and intent, because that highlights the intent of not only The Good Speaker, but one of the reasons why we are here. He wanted to create a tax structure or a tax process where, in fact, all of the GRTs or the business privilege taxes can be captured as a result of some of these projects. We have in Section 2, really, a clarification of the definitions between a primary contractor and a subcontractor. And this is, this, these are amendments to the existing code. A primary contractor, the verbiage that is added there is including any other services or products that the project may require, and the subcontractor's definition shall include every person engaging in the business of providing labor products or services to a primary contractor for a specific project. Moving on to Section 3, one of the issues that was brought up by members of the Contractors' Licensing Board, and some of our contractors out there, is that there's got to be a mechanism where many of these businesses would either acquire their licenses or be licensed to do business on Guam. So if you turn to page 3, Madam Speaker, it's clarified there in terms of line 7 and line 8, that the Contractor's License Number shall be issued by the Guam Contractors' License Board or the Guam Business License Number, whichever numbers can be utilized specifically to link back to the contractors that would be participating in any of these upcoming military contracts. So, Madam Speaker, this deals with really tax collection, minimizing any double taxation on the same project to the subcontractors, and allowing the subcontractors to be able to benefit by establishing those relationships with the primary contractors, of which we know some of them would not have their original headquarters stationed here in Guam. So that's, that's really the intent of, of some of our business, businessmen and women out there that wanted to ensure that this legislation is clarified so that we can capture the business privilege taxes as much as we possibly can, and that a process is in place that revenue tax can implement. So, Madam Speaker, I thank the Chairman of the Finance Committee for reviewing this legislation, for making the appropriate amendments based on the discussions during the public hearing, and also during subsequent discussions, during roundtable discussions in addressing this issue. So I ask you and our colleagues for your support for this particular proposal. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion for on Bill 221, there being none, so are there any objections then to send 221 to the third reading file? So ordered. Senators, we're going to take a brief, oh, okay. All right, you ready? All right. Senator Esposito, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On Bill 384-33, after discussing this with both Senators Tom Ada and Mary Torres and help of legal counsel, so we've been able to come to an agreement that I want to offer to the body to amend, to amend the bill, and I have this amendment being copied right now, so it'll be passed, there it is, it's going to be passed out. We want to be sure that the, provide for a definition of veteran, which is already contained in the, in the statute, and so we're saying preference for any veteran, to add the words, as that term is defined in 16 GCA subsection 7120.2B1. And we also want to say, who is also the named applicant in any application for public housing, so the other words, the preference shall extend to the household of which the veteran is a member, the surviving household, all of those things will be deleted, so that we're not only providing for a standard definition of a veteran, we're also saying that the veteran has to be the named applicant in any application for public housing. And I think that this amendment will satisfy the concerns raised by not only these two senators I mentioned, but also, also other members. So I offer this as an amendment, and copies have been passed out already.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment recess. Session, Senator Frank Blas, you're, you're good. Okay, so on the amendment, are there any objections to the amendment? No? No objections, so ordered. On the main motion then to send Bill 384-33 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senators, we're going to take another recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Having exhausted the second reading file, or those bills that still need more time for whatever reason, I move that we proceed to the, to the third reading file and that we recess till 3 o'clock on Friday.
3 o'clock Friday. We are in recess. I did, that's what the time they gave me, recess.